Call the meeting to order, the work session. So tonight's work session, we have two items on here, the dog leash penalties and Resilient Action Committee update. So I passed out this section related to our dog penalties. So it looks like the first offense is $50, $75 for second offense and $100 for third offense. And then it does talk about section three, 13 down there with misdemeanor penalties of not less than $50 nor more than 500. So I think last week, we was suggested that it this be at least $75. So I guess, and by the way, I just in the last couple of days, got a picture of two dogs running loose. One looks like a pit bull. You know, it's frustrating. It's frustrating for people or when those dogs are in their neighborhood because they're kind of scary.
Are these tickets written by our police force?
Chief says yes, basically. Yeah. Because we don't have animal control.
Right. So if they're out on the loop trail and it's reported that a dog is off of a leash, how do you enforce that?
As long as it's in the city, we can, and that sometimes you run into, if it's in the county, our obviously city ordinance don't apply and then we have to go with the state law. But almost every time, people say, I want something done, we just need them to show up court because they're usually the only ones that have seen the dog loose. And some of the, most of the time, they, and I don't blame them, but they don't want to show up in court to testify that they witnessed and can identify the dog. It's like speeding tickets or anything else. We try to give verbal warnings if they've had several or a couple verbal warnings. Our system shows it and then they get a ticket.
And how do you even identify who it is?
If, if we can identify, most of the time, we know where the dogs live or, and just go talk to them. And a lot of times they'll say, well, it's, you know, not my dog. Well, I've seen it every day when I drive by. Well, it's my son's dog. But at least then they're accepting ownership and then somebody can get a ticket. And then we ask them, do you want the ticket or you want your kid to get the ticket? This needs addressed and it's usually addressed.
Okay.
They sometimes, the people who reported it are afraid of retribution. I have told people also, if they've got a picture of it and they know who those dogs are, to go take that picture and go tell the police, the law center whose dogs they are, who the owner is, and let them take it from there.
Okay.
And you know, if you, if you got a picture on your phone, it's date and timestamped, so you got the proof right there.
Yep, yep. We just had, I won't bore you with a lot of legal terms, but they have shown in court and testified they took the picture and that it's true and accurate to the best of their knowledge kind of thing. Or it's hearsay if we try to testify alone without them there.
Sure. Thank you.
No problem.
So how often do you think you, the law center gets called on dogs? Is it every week, every day?
Every day.
Every day?
Usually we have two or three, either barking dogs or loose dog. Yeah, easiest every day. I hear them grumbling going out the door all the time.
You mean the officers?
Yes.
Because they gotta go after.
Gotta go on another barking dog.
Right, yeah. It's hard to deal with. I mean, get a good resolution. Anybody want to increase the penalty, thinking to increase it?
Sure.
What do you think it should be increased to?
Well, I guess, is there a point in increasing it if we can also include a misdemeanor violation? I mean, what's the benefit to increasing the civil penalty versus enforcing a misdemeanor violation in addition? I guess, yeah. Does anyone?
I think, well, my impression is based off Vicki, is to get the penalty up high enough where it's a little more of a deterrent because it's not enough of a deterrent at this point.
Right. I guess I just am confused because there is a civil penalty in section one here. And then section three enforcement may also, in addition to issuance of a civil citation, include filing of a misdemeanor violation complaint with misdemeanor penalties of not less than 50 nor more than 500. So it sounds like you could really pile it on if you wanted to.
Yeah.
Is there a benefit though, for you guys to just have it be a higher ticket amount or, yeah, okay?
Yes. It's a great question. It's, the actual misdemeanor is a lot easier in court than the civil penalties. And it's the same way with parking. We weren't getting any compliance with $10 parking tickets. Now with $50, people are moving vehicles after they get that ticket.
Okay. So increase the ticket?
Okay.
Chief, you also have one other remedy, don't you? And that is that an additional violations, three violations will get you an irresponsible animal ownership and then they don't get to have the dog at all.
Yes. Yeah. It's an annan, we have very good animal controller as compared to other cities.
Have we ever done that?
What's that?
Have we ever done that? Three violations and you, we take your dog away?
We, we try to, most times they comply and they stop being an irresponsible dog owner or at least they take them out of the city. But I, yeah, I think, John, Rebecca, correct me if I'm wrong, five to 10 times, we've probably tried to ban somebody from the city.
We've had it happen a few times, Your Honor, and my recall is that usually the owner took the dog out of town rather than get rid of the dog.
So would you like to see this come back as an action item with, you know?
Yeah. Increase penalties?
50% increase, 100% increase, go to 50 to 100 or what do you, what do you think? Or go to the next level, which starts at 75?
I guess I'd vote for, I mean, I, I think that would make sense, starting at 75.
Start at 75?
Yeah. But that's just me, I don't know.
Yeah. Any thoughts, Terry?
Um. $25 more doesn't seem like that much more to me. So if you made it 100, I feel like they'd be less likely to, a double the penalty.
Be more of a deterrent.
It's a hundred dollars. Like, you know, you can do a lot with a hundred dollars.
Okay. Any thoughts, Doug?
I'd just like to make it a deterrent rather than a, oh, I'll just pay it.
Try 25 more on each one and see if it works.
Oh, pull your mic down.
Well, try $25 more on each one and see if that works. Doubling is a big, pretty big jump.
Okay. I know you just got.
I mean, a lot of people have more than one dog and so that's gonna already hit them hard.
Yeah. Okay.
If it helps, we don't usually cite, and the judge will let him plead the one. And most of our traffic offenses in Iowa, set, state of Iowa, are at least a hundred dollars, it seems to deter, especially the people that have been given warning after warning. The judge will let them plead. If we cite every dog in the house, the judge says, it looks like we're picking on them anyway. Usually the one citation is enough.
Are we consistent citing people?
Yes.
Are we too soft?
Yes, probably, but it's like anything, everybody wants us to enforce crosswalks or speed until they're caught speeding or not coming to a complete stop at a right turn on red. And when you're talking about on the side of the road. And the officers have that information every time we stop somebody. And they'll say, I've given you two warnings, you're getting a ticket now, usually. But almost all misdemeanors, at least get one or two warnings. We don't cite anybody for loose dog until we've been there repeatedly, kind of thing. And they, they understand. They're a little cranky, but they understand they're not correcting the law.
If it's a pit bull, personally, I wouldn't, one warning is enough, in my view. So.
We just have to be careful because state law says we can't read specific, we can't attack just pit bulls. It's got to be an aggressive pit bull or it has to be, the same thing, like I said, with speeding. If they're driving five miles over the police speed limit, the judge is gonna look at that a lot different than 25 miles over the postman in a reckless way through a school zone. It's just that, this is a dangerous jo, dog and that's why they were cited. The judge does understand that. It's bit in the ground or whatever before.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we'll bring it back as an action item next round, starting at 75 and see if that helps at all. And, okay, so let's move on to the Resilient Action Committee and Faith is here tonight.
Thank you, counsel, for letting me be a part of the study session. I'll get an extra minute or two, a little bit more time than the September update. So, uh, this is our kind of 2025 in total update. So just a reminder of the timeline, RAC started in 2023, March 2023, that's when 30 members from the community came together, volunteers to become the RAC body. It organized from April to October of 2023 into subcommittees and started researching concerns within those thematic subcommittee topic areas. And then in October, October, November, a framework was adopted for designing the resilient action plan. So a whole process. It ended up being a 12-step process of going through and, and working through each of the issues that subcommittees prioritized. I was hired in November of 2023 to lead that process. And from December 2023 through May 2025, we spent a lot of time in the planning stage. Well, June 2024 through, June, July 2024 through June 2025, we were actively pursuing funding for grant programs, grant projects. So we had an immediate awareness around the, because of the rural housing readiness assessment, we had a really clear understanding and just being a part of Fairfield that many of our homes are substandard, well over 500 of our homes, 560 some odd homes in our community are listed as substandard. And, you know, there are different ways that the assessor would make that classification, but they're below normal. So we knew that there was a need for helping community members with critical repairs on their homes. And so we started searching for grant programs in that time period. And then June, July of 2025, we started doing some implementation. The first was the waste management, kicking the can out of the landfill. That was a necessity. We had an opportunity there to jump on trying to get some of those trashcans out of the landfill. We had a campaign around that. Oh, RAC also, fall 2025, RAC has formalized as FRAN. FRAN is a nonprofit that's in, per your recommendations from the Personnel Committee, RAC has acquired a board, basically same, same management team. So it's Ann Walton, Mark Dwyer, Doug Floranoi, Don Holting is on the RAC or the FRAN board and Stuart Valentine are on the FRAN board. So five FRAN board members have come together and incorporated with the state of Iowa, submitted their EIN or have now their EIN and have submitted the paperwork to the IRS, the 1023 for nonprofit status, 501(c)(3) nonprofit status. So this is just a brief rundown of early implementation and forward objectives or future objectives for each of the subcommittees. The subcommittee Buildings and Energy, focusing on healthy neighborhoods and quality housing, construction and trade maintenance, tradespeople, non-residential buildings. That's the thematic areas that that subcommittee focused on. We had an opportunity early on to submit a, a draft ordinance for ADU and there's a second opportunity right now with Iowa's new law to support the city in bringing that updated ordinance to the city, to Melanie, planning and zoning when it's available. I don't, Doug or Don Holting and John Lippman have been in communication with both Connie and Melanie about that. We have had an opportunity to support the early research around the, the revisiting on building codes. And so trying to figure out what are peer cities in the community doing. So looking at 100 different peer cities in the, in Iowa, figuring out where they are with their building codes, starting first with, we were looking at the Main Street communities and Iowa thriving communities. Have they adopted? Because it was pertinent at the time. We, of course, as you'll remember, have submitted two very large EPA grant applications that were focused around quality housing and healthy neighborhoods. Unfortunately, that funding was pulled back at the federal level with the new administration, but we got a lot of good fodder for additional grants for housing in healthy neighborhoods. And then we also had an opportunity to be the project lead for the Iowa thriving communities' application process. And then I also got to play a support role for Grow Fairfield and the city for the Empowering Rural Iowa Innovation Housing 2.0 application as well. Future projects, we're working on a inventory to, and this is land use, buildings and energy, private land stewardship, all of these subcommittees, even foodways will benefit from a large, it's a full parcel inventory of the cities inside the city limits, categorizing each of the parcels in different ways for each of the subcommittees. So a large inventory, but for Buildings and Energy, it will focus on houses that need durability and efficiency upgrades. We'll continue to pursue funding opportunities to support those programs. And then we would love to build on what Grow Fairfield has already started, support that process of collaborating with local trades professionals and local employers to promote workforce housing initiatives, internships, apprenticeships, and skills-based training. Waste management, it's reducing solid waste of the landfill and just boosting the awareness around how awesome our wastewater treatment plant is, having the community understand how to treat it properly so that it maintains high functioning and that the biological system is ticking along as they would like to see it be. Mostly just kind of boosting the awareness around how awesome our wastewater treatment plant is. Early implementation, we did the kicking.
I don't think I've ever thought of the waste management system as awesome.
The wastewater treatment plant? Yeah, you should go. Have you ta, have you taken a tour of it, Sean?
I have.
It's pretty epic.
It's pretty awesome.
It's pretty epic. It's all biological. It's not, you know, it's pretty great. So again, we were able to pull 30, or 350 trashcans from going to the landfill. We had hoped for more, but we, we tried as hard as we could to get that information out there. We had a great campaign with that. Those all went and got recycled at Ware Plastics. We are currently working on a STEAM fest for February of 2000, or February of 26, and that's a collaboration with IS, the ISU Extension and the Fairfield Community School District, science, technology, engineering, arts, agriculture, and mathematics. And so kind of a, a career fest around repurposing and innovating. We want to support in the future innovating around commercial waste diversion and community recycling education in general and of course promoting enterprises around using those, those materials. Land use, forward thinking policy and planning and undeveloped spaces. We are currently in the process of running a few projects through a template process. It's a, it's a decision-making tool for environmental, social, economic, and sustainable project awareness. And so it's a, it's a pretty comprehensive tool that, again, we're running some projects through, you know, one that might be controversial, futuristic projects, one that might be controversial and one that's not, one that's had some pushback in the community and one that's brand new, just to see if this tool holds up to muster. After we get those examples pulled through, I'd like to sit with Doug and Melanie to review that process and then if that goes well, we'll bring it to council for review if it, if it seems amenable. We've researched modernizing the current city website, you know, just going through, doing a nice review of the website, looking at what could be upgraded with the platform that we currently have. We've done a notification and a app review as well with the community. And so we're just trying to support the process of having, you know, information spread easily. And we'd love to see code digitate, digitization.
I'm working on it. I was gonna be in my project update, but I didn't have time because I'm working so hard on it.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, so we're in support, however we can be a support there, we want to be there. And then again, that citywide parcel inventory, which is a tedious task, is going to be very helpful for land use and undeveloped spaces, that category, categorization system, to be able to look through and identify, you know, are the, who owns the property, size, what's the past use, what's current use, does it have utilities, does it, you know, what's its next best use if it's not currently being fully utilized? Okay. Foodways, we have supporting a robust community food system and supporting table food farmers for business viability. We had a wonderful art walk, harvest-focused art walk in September. We'll plan to do that year over year and grow it. We'd love to see, you know, full-on farm-to-table style communal dining, you know, like a full dinner type of scenario where we have some really highlights with restaurants and farmers and farms. Working on making those matches between harvest expectations and menu ingredients with some local restaurants. And so trying to make that match easy for them. How do they order direct from the farms? Of course, ongoing support with the community garden. We've had our, a wonderful second season. And then ongoing support with the community orchard as well, more in a coordinating fashion there, that management of the community garden. And ongoing, just, you know, have done a lot of planning around grant opportunities that we weren't quite ready for, for looking at infrastructure for the food system, but we've got a lot of planning there. In the future, needs assessment, we want to see what those barriers are for the table food farmers and the consumers. We want to, you know, support home garden support. We have the FGI program several years back. We want to continue that type of educational program. And then we're also looking to increase the quantity of locally grown food into our pantries. We hear it right now, there's a big need. And so we want to create something like a grow or row program, but we'll call it plant a patch because that's a trademark thing. So we'll call it plant a patch and create something like that where home gardeners and farmers can support our pantries. Enterprise solutions and community connections, we're focused on coordinated communications, supporting our volunteer networks and building a thriving economy. We've developed surveys for the coordinated communications, three different surveys, one to our media channels, one to our volunteer organizations, and one for the public at large. Waiting until FRAN has a website live so that we can post those clearly and have that be a great platform for getting those disseminated. We'll launch the surveys, analyze the results, and work off of those results in the coming future. We'd love to hold volunteer roundtables. We want to help coordinate vol, we want to just, how can we be supportive of our awesome volunteer networks? We don't want to play any type of, of lead role in anything other than, hey, let's just make sure everybody's recognized and getting what they need. So this is kind of where we are right now. FRAN is going to be the parent organization for the RAC. The RAC will continue with its six subcommittees, moving forward with our implementation projects. You know, RAC will, or FRAN will be the kind of finance, marketing, compliance. They'll take care of those decision-making activities for the RAC. And RAC will work as, each of the subcommittees will be working groups and they will do more of that community outreach, outreach connection and, and, you know, project facilitation, a lot of the research, the subcommittees. And yeah, thank you for allowing me this time. I will say, you know, I think you'll see it in Doug's administrator report that my time with the city potentially has a, has a sundown in December. December 13th was, our funding is running through that period of time as it stands right now. There's not a big ask here. I think we'll come back to you maybe in another council meeting soon after you have a moment to just kind of think about that. But it's work we want to continue and FRAN, I think, would be a good umbrella organization to house that work. But that's a decision that we'll have you make. Thank you.
Any questions for Faith, by the way? Before we stop, we got about two minutes, three minutes?
No, thank you, Faith.
Thank you so much for letting us know what everybody's up to. It's really helpful.
Okay. So we'll take a break here for just a couple of minutes before we start the meeting.
I do have it, yes, I do have it. I know I do.
Thank you. Live conversation tonight. Hope that's good. So I'll call the meeting to order, and Rebecca, will you please call the roll?
Thompson?
Yes, present.
To who?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, are they changes the agenda tonight?
I struck the July finance report.
Oh, yeah, that's right. July finance report is coming up. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of October 13th, 2025 council meeting. Approval of October 24th, 2025 payroll in the amount of $119,749.60. Resolution authorizing fund transfers. Approval of the June finance report. Acceptance of the library board minutes. Resolution of seasonal employment in the streets department. Resolution of employment in the fire department. Approval of liquor license for Mad Hatters, this special event at 501 East Burlington Avenue. Approval of special claims, visa in the amount of $13,688.83. Approval of total claims in the amount of $1,833,526.39. We had four claims more than $75,000. Kristner Contracting for the fire station, $719,684.86. EBS for our health insurance premiums of $81,273.90. FI Excavating, Inc. for Sunrise Trail in the amount of $167,362.62. And our Iowa community insurance pool for insurance renewals, $598,785. And my understanding is that did increase because we increased some coverages there. So just to let you know.
I have a question on the visa. I assume that's multiple charges, not just one?
Correct.
Okay. Can you just tell, like, tell me who reviews that card usage, the charges that are on it?
Tom looks over the-
You look at the actual credit card statement?
Yes, I do, and they're all signed by the department head in each department.
So that's just used by all departments, not just one person?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And I think Denise reviews it as well.
Yes.
Okay.
She matches it all up to the penny, and then they're all located by each department head. And then I review all those.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Caness. Any discussion?
I did review all the claims, and they all stand in order.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda was approved unanimously. Let's go to public forum appearances. Tonight we have Alex McUnus, our library director, for a library update.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. This will be very short. I just wanted to let you know that the library board, they approved some funding from their reserve fund to hire an educator or kind of a resource person to give us guidance on our fundraising initiative. As you may recall, about a year ago, MSR Design, architecture firm from Minneapolis, decided to visit Fairfield and engaged in a community discussion on services that our community would like to see offered at the library. And based on, based on the results of that survey, MSR designed a plan for us, including an update to the youth services department. The total cost of that project, if the library board approved the full package, would be $1.3 million. There's definitely still time to discuss the various aspects of that project, but in the meantime, we're going to begin fundraising toward that goal because we know that our building does need a lot of deferred maintenance to be completed, such as the roof, the concrete at that north side entrance, which has become kind of more treacherous actually in the last couple of years. But what we want to do is, we want to make repairs to the building, but also enhance it as we're working toward this goal. And so we have a fundraising committee that's now meeting monthly. We're beginning a feasibility study, so we're identifying potential donors in our community, and we would welcome more community members to join the fundraising committee if they're interested and want to be a part of this project. But I also wanted to share that I've become acquainted with Katie Roche at Iowa City Public Library. She is the head of the development office there in Iowa City, and she's been giving me some good guidance, too, in terms of how to begin this initiative. And I'm just really excited to get out there and meet people and connect with some people who maybe even haven't visited the library in quite some time, but people who love it, people who, you know, remember as a child in the 60s, you know, coming to the library for storytime and things like that, you know, and just connecting with people of all ages, of all backgrounds, and, you know, creating something really beautiful and fresh for our community. Next year, our library will be 30 years old in that current building, and it's time to, I know people are like, really? It's been 30 years already? I remember it was just the other day I went there for opening day. But yeah, so we are really excited about this initiative, and I also have some other exciting news to share. Maybe some of you have heard about this already, but the Carnegie Institute is reaching out to all the public libraries across the United States that received funding initially to build their library buildings, including ours, even though we are not in our original building. And they are giving every library that received funds to build an original building $10,000. So that will be something that we can contribute toward this project. And we also, the library board has also allocated about $250,000 already toward this project. So we're very, very excited, and I will, as I have important updates to share, I will bring you brief updates up to once a month. Thank you so much. Let me know if you have any questions.
Yeah, I didn't know the Carnegie Institute was still active.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't, I didn't know that they were active to that degree either.
And Alex, what did you say was the total that you want to fundraise for?
Around $1.3 million.
Okay. Great. Any other questions? All righty, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to resolution, action items, and ordinances. First action item is consideration of contract with Pathfinders for replacing the downtown restroom project.
Evening all. So there should be a packet in front of you. The top page is the replacing downtown restroom. This was an email from Krista Tedrow with Pathfinders. She was the agent that I spoke to about what Pathfinders could do for us in our search for funding. And just to refresh your memory, I did say that I was going to apply for the Washington County Riverboat Foundation grant. I did not apply for that. I started it, got sick with pneumonia, two months later I just said, yeah, just consider it done, not done. So I'm kind of glad that I was able to sort of start over. The billing structure from Pathfinders came in three choices, and the second choice, the block billing method, is the preferred, preferred by our steering committee. We felt that it was the least risk. And so the second page you have is just a one pager giving you an overview of what Pathfinder could do for us.
Was there still some concern about how that was going, how Pathfinders was going to be funded?
I know we talked our last meeting about it coming from beautification committee and whether-
That was an original thought.
Okay.
In our budget, we had in one bucket $500 miscellaneous, and I thought, why not ask if we could use that for seeding Pathfinder? And then we would have the burden of fundraising for the other $7,000 approximately. Now, that's just a ballpark. Could be less, could be more. But since then, I've learned that there could be another source to pay for the professional services offered by Pathfinder, and that is the rag bribe funds that were collected and earmarked for the public restrooms. Precise use of those funds to be determined, but it's just under seven grand. That would get us most of the way there if we could use those funds, and that's completely at your discretion.
And I did talk to the chair, and they really wanted those funds to be used for seed money, so that could be used for seed money for a grant, so versus using it to pay for someone to look for grants. That's the feedback I got.
And Pathfinders is giving us a 50% discount. Their hourly rate is 50 an hour. They're giving us a rate of 25 an hour, only because I asked. Nothing special.
You never know until you ask, right?
You never know.
The most I can do is say no.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for asking.
Let's see, is there anything else? I do have some other papers that you don't have, but it's just more information than we need to go into tonight. So I don't know if this request needs to go to committee or if it can go to a motion tonight.
Yeah, so what would you like, counsel? Do you want to choose one of these options here? And start with their $500 that they have?
Where's the rest of the money going to come from?
Well, ideally, it comes, it's the seed money from the rag bribe funds. Again, it's just under six grand.
Right.
And, I mean-
Good luck at local option, sales tax coming up, but I guess that doesn't tell, I mean, budgeting, but that wouldn't be really available till July 1 next year.
What about the donors you're speaking of? There's an outline for a number of donors and donor stages?
Who I haven't contacted yet. So really, Krista is on hold, and I'm on hold in terms of, you know, spending our resources on doing anything else until I get approval to use either beautification funds, $500, to get us one month into it, and then I'll be coming back to you for more, or getting it from a donor, or just going straight to the rag bribe funds and getting most of the way there, and, yeah, seeing how far that takes us. Again, the 7,500 is a ballpark for a two-year worth of professional services.
It would seem to me that it makes sense to me to use the beautification commission funds. You're chair of the beautification commission, I suspect you've spoken with the members, and probably, are they in support of this?
Well, they are more in support of the rag bribe funds being used for it because, you know, we don't get that large of a budget for all that we do, and there are always surprises that come up, and so that $500 miscellaneous was there as contingency for our activities.
But we understand-
So using, using all of that for this gets us just a month into it.
Right.
And I'd have to kind of scramble. So there's less stress with using the rag bribe funds than using the 500 from beautification.
But you're saying the rag bribe committee is saying they do not-
Well, I just spoke to one person, so I would say that that's one person's opinion. And so, you know, if you want to go back to them as a group and gather their different opinions and bring it back, but I think they're, you know, again, just this is what I was told, was that they would rather, the one person said she would rather see that money be used for matching funds for a grant.
Okay. The only person I've spoken to is Terry, so maybe we're talking to the same person.
No, I don't think we are.
Okay, so how many people are in the group?
What was Terry's?
Oh, she said use the funds from, you know, she said that should be the seed money. And, like, all along, we were assuming there was something there, but it wasn't, it wasn't readily visible to me until I ran into her a few weeks ago.
Well, it was just put in the city's funds just more recently, in the last, what, month?
Like September?
Few months? Yeah, not very long ago. They just brought the check over.
Yeah, so she closed out her books, Terry, and it was rolled over to the city fund.
So I would say go back and talk to Terry and talk to Denise Hall.
Okay.
And I don't know who else was on that group, but maybe they could do an informal survey amongst-
Sure.
-all their team leads.
Yep, yep.
Because there were several of them.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah.
And who knows, they might have, you know, additional feedback from you that would be really useful.
Right, it would be great to hear from them at a council meeting.
Okay.
Right? If that's their suggestion of what to use the funds for, it'd be great to hear directly from them.
You never know if you can get people to come here or not. So why don't I start with emailing them and see if I can get, like, an email thread going, get, you know, maybe a majority of them to respond affirmatively that those funds could be used for seeding the project.
Yeah, Terry knows all those contacts.
Okay.
I believe.
Start with her. And then I'll also invite them to-
And so does Denise.
So we can, we can flood you with information.
So it's the rag bribe committee's money, or is it the city's money?
Well, it's the city's money, but they had an intention, right, that it was for the bathroom.
Uh-huh. Oh, they did, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's what they communicated to the community, that any money that was left over was for public restrooms.
Yeah, I think they, when they spoke before the council, they mentioned that.
But this would be going to the public restrooms. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
Right.
I think it'd be just good to hear from them as well.
Sure.
An informal poll.
They put a lot of work into it, so at least respect them enough to-
Yep.
Have their input, yeah.
I got it.
Yeah.
I know what they're gonna say, so I'm not worried.
There you go, so.
All right, guys, any other questions?
Let's just put a dot on it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay. So I guess tonight we're just not taking any action on that, so. Next is a public hearing on the matter of plan specifications, form of contract, and engineer's opinion of Adams Avenue project. Marcus, go ahead, before I open the public hearing, we'll let you explain it.
Sounds good. Good evening, counsel. Yeah, this project is the overlay of Adam's-
Yeah, this project is the overlay of Adams Avenue from Sixth Street to Main Street. That's project consists of milling off the existing overlay, finding any additional patches needed, do some additional patches, then installing two one-and-a-half inch overlays, HMA lifts, and then coming back at the end, making the sidewalks of the intersections ADA compliant. The engineer estimate is 390,000, and I'm here to answer any additional questions.
What's the timeframe?
Most likely the construction will take place in the spring.
In the spring.
Most likely. If they get a little... They could do it this winter, but most likely would be in the spring. It's more, would be better to do in the spring.
Yeah.
Which was the last road we did this to?
Little Fawn. It would be something very similar. We did on Little Fawn, kind of right there by the middle school, southwest of the, kind of directly west of the middle school. We did a little overlay there. I think that was the last one we did.
So with that information, I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody want to speak to this particular issue, this overlay on Adams from Sixth Street to Main Street? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have questions for Marcus? Anything additional? Okay, with that, let's just go to the action item. Again, consideration of plan specifications, form of contract, and engineer's opinion of Adams Avenue project. So again, this is an overlay, and I would take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, so that was approved unanimously. Next is a public hearing on the matter of amendment to chapter 11.4 recreational activities on the reservoir. There is a reference there. Melanie, you got your head down, but you want to talk about this real quick? This is, we're going to go to the second reading, but if you'll again just review for the public, and then I'll open the public hearing.
Yeah, so I would say a majority of this is not a substantial change. It is moving the stuff that is currently in Title 14 and moving it to, and moving it to chapter 11. The section in chapter 11 is public places. The new portions include paragraph A, paragraph D, the definition of water crafts and docks. And that is referencing state code. D1 references state code. D2 states no person shall operate a motorboat or any water craft that creates wake on any city reservoir except US Fish and Wildlife Services, NRCS employees, or DNR or city employees pursuant to their duties. And that's really the main thing that we need. The reason why this ordinance came up in the first place is making sure to get that part that is in the Walton covenants, getting that into our code, and that's the reference document that's there, is the Walton Lake covenants. And then the only other real, I mean, there's a few minor word changes. The only other new part is part J, protection of water sources. And again, those are coming from the Walton Lake or the Walton subdivision covenants, protecting the water source from those sources of runoff and those uses.
Thank you. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wants to speak regarding this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. So this is the second reading of ordinance 1271. Again, related to chapter 11.4 recreational activities on the reservoir. Have you heard anything back from the Walton group on any of this? Nothing? Okay.
This does not restrict kayaks or canoes or anything like that, correct?
I think so.
Unless you're really fast.
Unless you waterski behind them?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have a quick question about the hunting aspect. So we have an in-town deer hunting ordinance?
Yep.
So, and this is not consistent with that ordinance, right?
No, it is. It actually says in that part E3, that says no person shall, nope, sorry, E2, that they cannot shoot a bow and arrow except as approved through the deer management hunts as described in 940, which is the deer management section that I just printed off for Chief Thomas because he had an application today, so...
That was my question.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Any other questions? There a motion to approve? Move this to the second to the third reading?
Motion to move to second, or third reading.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Kness. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. 1271, that was approved unanimously. Next is, I will open the public hearing after hearing from Melanie. This is on the matter amendment to chapter 10.3, streets with 35 miles per hour limit.
I brought the wrong one. So this is to lower the speed limit on Walton Road from a little bit east of the trail crossing, all the way to Pleasant Plain Road, from 45 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour. There, I had email correspondence with the county engineer. The city will put up the signs. Roughly two-thirds of the lineal feet of this road is city property on either side, and so we will put up the signs once this does pass. The attachment, the memo that's attached to it does describe the process that was used to justify lowering that speed limit.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak to this lowering of the speed limit on Walton Lake? Hearing, seeing none, we will move on to the actual ordinance to move this to the second, from the second to the third reading, ordinance 1272. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve ordinance, was it 1272, from the second to the third reading?
Okay, moved by Kness?
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any discussion?
Toohill? Yeah, sorry. I heard his voice first.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Kness?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Ordinance 1272 passed unanimously. Next is the matter of amendment to title 16, fire of the Fairfield Municipal Code.
So this brings the city code in line with a county ordinance that was passed earlier this year, back in March of '25. The council added, I'll say a clause in our fire fees that when somebody is burning during a burn ban or a red flag warning that the maximum limit of fire fees, we limited bills of 3,000 or up to $1,000, that that does not, that limit does not apply if you decide to burn during a burn ban. And so then this additional language outlines further guidance, or I shouldn't say guidance, outlines the code related to controlled burns, what's considered a controlled burn, steps that individuals need to take in order to be considered a controlled burn, and again, trying to not have that over $1,000 penalty should they choose to burn unsafely, I guess, maybe is the best word to use. But it does, and there, so there are a couple of sections in there that, 1606020, it says not used. And that's just to keep kind of the numbering, or to keep the numbering in line with the county's paragraphs, so.
Good, great, thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody who wants to speak to this particular code? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And counsel 1273, this is moving it from the second to the third reading.
Motion to move to third reading?
Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Kness. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Okay. 1273, ordinance 1273 was passed unanimously. Lastly, is the matter of regulations pertaining to garage sales.
Well, I apologize, I just now found my copy from the last meeting that had our markups. So I don't, unless Rebecca made them, I did not get the typos corrected on that. I will get that done before the third reading now that I've found my copy. What? She did it, great, good, glad she's paying attention. But there is a few items shown there on red. There was a request to make reference to our sign ordinance on there. And in order to make sure that the sign ordinance and the garage sale ordinance are in line. There we go. So signs shall meet the requirements of 2076060 number nine, which is the garage sales. And then on the next page, instead of saying that the signs come down immediately upon completion, what section 2076 says is that it must be removed no later than the following day. So I guess rather than changing section 20, I changed that section of the code. And basically, you know, that other, referring to the sign ordinance has things in there like... The size of the sign. I mean, it reinforces that it can't be attached to utility poles, it can't be in the right of way, that it needs to have the person's contact information on it. And then it also addresses any fines for violating the sign ordinance, such as having, blocking traffic or things like that.
Yeah. Melanie, do you think that D, under restrictions, at the end of any sale period, all sale items signage and display paraphernalia must be removed from public view? Would that include like tents? Or do we need to specify tents?
If the tent is being used for that sale, then yes.
So what if it was used for that sale and it's still up four months later?
And I have not had an opportunity. The reason why this was not on our work session is I haven't had a chance to dig into this further. I believe where those concerns have come up are primarily, actually, currently zoned commercial. Even though they are being used, even though they're taxed and used as residential, by our zoning map, they're commercial. And so this proposed ordinance only applies to the residential areas. And, you know, playing devil's advocate here, you know, if fesslers wants to have a tent up for some sort of special sale, those tent companies might come three days before the sale and might not get there until a few days after the sale. So I think what we would have in a commercial zone is going to be slightly different than what we would have in a residential zone. And then what we would have in our B1, which is downtown, is going to be different than what we're going to have in our B2, which is more Burlington and I would say our larger lot commercial. And so I think there's going to need to be additional regulations to address some of those things related to sale of goods in business zones. Having them set out for long periods of time, having that tent up for a long period of time. If I just say no tents, I don't want to punish, again, I don't want to punish fesslers, but I also see where, you know, where some of the concerns have been coming from. And I just...
But does fesslers have garage sales?
No, no, but...
Fireworks would be one.
Well, and fireworks are allowed under a different section of the code.
I was going to say that's a peddler thing, right?
Yeah, but the tents are put up prior and taken down after.
I guess I'm just saying specific to this ordinance. Like if I have a house on Burlington and I set up a tent to sell stuff out of and I do it for four weeks.
Right.
And then I leave that tent for four months.
But if you would come to me and say that you had a business license? I mean, if that individual has a business license, then this wouldn't apply. If say they had a consignment shop there.
So let me ask this question. What was your, because a constituent asked me. Maybe you said it before, but I guess, I think the public would want to hear it again. I know some do. What was the origin of this particular origin, or this ordinance?
So I believe the concern with perpetual garage sales was what stemmed this. And I did not realize until five minutes before the last council meeting that the south side of Burlington was actually zoned commercial. And so when this, when I wrote this ordinance, I used a lot of, I referenced other cities and used pretty much what they had of, that this applies to commercial and industrial zones, thinking that that would address some of the concerns with perpetual garage sales. And then when I looked at the zoning map, realized it's not going to address perpetual garage sales in commercial zoned areas. Again, talking zone, not use, and...
So is this ordinance, was its original intention to address garage sales on Burlington? And it doesn't, right?
Correct.
So are we creating an ordinance which addresses a problem or that doesn't actually, that's not really a problem? I guess what I'm trying to ask.
Well, we want to avoid a problem though too, in the future.
Did we open the public hearing already?
No, we haven't.
Oh, okay, I didn't, sorry, I didn't know.
No, we haven't. That's why you were asking me. No, I haven't, just because she's explaining, people are asking questions.
Yeah, okay.
So...
I will say that the language that is being proposed is very common in other cities. Do we have a problem with perpetual garage sales in residential areas? I will say honestly, I haven't looked for them. I think there's other nuisance issues that we have looked for. That's about the best answer I can come up with. I really cannot speak to it. I would say honest, the signs are my bigger concern, but I also am, you know, 5'2" and I can't see around corners.
So I don't know, yeah. So it might be that this is an ordinance, this is an ordinance that we don't need to address now? I mean, the concern I have, the concern I'm expressing is from constituents who's saying, well, there are people who have garage sales who live in residential areas. They like to have them, maybe they have them more than four times a year, which is a limit in this ordinance. And this would limit them. But if it's not being considered, if it's not a problem from their neighbors or from the community, maybe we shouldn't, we shouldn't do it.
Yeah. It might not be, those neighbors might get along, but somebody moves out and somebody comes in and then you do have a problem.
Right, right. Do we want to address the problem? Well, it's not a problem, apparently, if I'm not hearing it's a problem. Do you want to limit people? Because we're actually focusing on solving something else and the language is such that it goes and limits somebody's activity elsewhere. It doesn't really address the problem we have, which is on, I think, on Burlington.
Yeah, and I mean, I was, I will say, when people set stuff out on the curb and whether they're saying it's for free or they are trying to sell it or something like that, there are parts of our nuisance code that we can apply. The section that says you can't have indoor furniture outside. The one nice thing about this is it's kind of a flat penalty rather than going through the nuisance process. So it would be another way to address maybe what would not be a traditional garage sale. I mean, someone who's claiming that it's a garage sale when actually, you know, it's just stuff outside, but they could say that it's a garage sale, which we have had that before.
Can you tell me more about the transient merchant or home occupation permits? Like, because it does say that people can get those permits for sales. Just generally, I don't know. So what's a transient merchant then?
Let me, let me, I can regret the quote, but it is someone that does not have a permanent address within Fairfield. It's primarily our food trucks.
Okay, all right.
I can say a lot of things that are exempt from that. I can say a lot of things that are exempt from that description would be, I mean, Schwanz doesn't exist anymore, but like that equivalent.
Right.
Because they're a corporation that's licensed a different way. You know, a newspaper.
Traveling salesman kind of thing.
Yeah, so, well, but then traveling salesman, you know, your encyclopedia salesman, those, those are going to be under your peddlers and your solicitors.
Okay.
And, and so those, I would say that those are probably the one that we really want to make sure that we are, that they are getting a permit. They do get like a laminated permit, go through a background check. A lot of times they'll even get their picture taken with the police department and post it to their social media so that people can look them up. And in addition to having a permit from the city, they can show people like, "Nope, I've met the police chief." And so that one is one where we do, I mean, we take them all very seriously, but that's one where I think people find it very useful to see the actual permits from the peddlers and the solicitors. The transient merchants is, again, primarily food trucks. I do have a phone call with Department of Inspections, Appeals and Licensing tomorrow. One of the things that he said that is important for our peddler permit procedure is that a food inspector doesn't go out and stop at every food truck he sees. He's like, "I would never get from point A to point B if I stopped at everyone I see." He goes, "I only stop and inspect the ones that are on my list to go and inspect." And so if there, if local jurisdictions aren't checking to make sure every single truck that we see has those state licenses, then there's no way, there's no, no one inspecting them. If there's no one telling them to go get that inspection or confirming that they have gotten those inspection, there's not another step through the state until, unfortunately, there's a problem or someone gets sick or a complaint gets called in. So the city's process is really the first step. If an individual doesn't get the proper food licenses, the city's process is the first step in getting that resolved. Otherwise, the state doesn't have a procedure unless a complaint comes in. And really, it has to be a lot of complaints in order for them to make a special trip for someone that is not already in their system.
Okay, so with that, I'll open the public hearing about garage sales. And does anybody want to speak to that? Can you please come to the microphone and tell us your name and what ward you live in?
Hi, my name's Eddie Kaplan, I'm on the fourth ward. I hadn't actually come here tending to speak tonight. I just want to reinforce some of the things I've already heard. This seems like an ordinance that's a solution in search of a problem. I was mainly concerned with the restriction of more than four times per year. I have a family member that holds a yard sale more than that. It's a long story, but essentially, they inherited a house that had previously been owned by a hoarder and they've been selling off the stuff that was there because of the things that have value. But it's not just that. I'm sure there's a lot of people in town that hold yard sales more frequently. Mr. Gandy, you talked about that. A friend recently said that to make ends meet, they've been selling stuff off that they wouldn't otherwise sell, and I think it's tough economic times. I think this helps them, they wouldn't want to restrict them. If the problem is really overuse of commercial yard sales on Burlington Avenue, I would rather see a different ordinance written so that it addresses that. And instead, this one's focused on the residential areas of, I'm not seeing that that's an actual problem.
And I think it kind of was twofold after what we realized. You know, that we had our attention on one thing and, again, this, this was created and then we realized, oh, we got another step to go, to fix one of the issues.
I just wanted to reinforce the point.
Yeah, and, and it seems to me also that somebody could make, if, if the council approves, wishes to pass this, that, the circumstance that you're talking about, that I would think that there would be an exception made for that particular thing, that they could come and talk to City Hall and their neighbors, it seems like it would be okay. But, but I appreciate it.
It's just an example, I'm not looking for an exception for, you know, my family member. It's, to me, it's just an example of the kinds of things that are legitimately being done.
Yeah, great, thank you. Thank you for sharing, even though you didn't plan to. Anyone else? Not, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to council, more council discussion.
I, I think it would make sense to go back to preparing, go back and prepare an ordinance that actually addresses a problem I think we thought we were addressing, which has to do with commercial property and garage sales. Table this or just change it to address the problem. And then if there's complaints in the, in the future about residential garage sales, we can address that at the time, but since there isn't really, I mean, we're not, I'm not hearing from constituents that there's a concern, I'm hearing the other way, the other way. And Mr. Kaplan is also another constituent who expressed that, that view. I think we should really just focus on the language that addresses what we do see as a problem, which has to do with garage sales perpetually being held on Burlington.
I think the signage is an important part of it as well, so I think that this gets us part of the way there, but I agree with Paul's statements.
I also think, too, that there's a benefit to people, like, not leaving tables out, you know, like, forever. I feel like maybe it's a little redundant to say, you know, limit it to four sales a year and then also you have to remove all this stuff. I mean, for me, it's really about like the signage and the display paraphernalia and everything that's just in public view for, you know, like, weeks or whatever. So, I mean, that, that, I mean, that speaks to me more than, than limiting it to the number of sales per year.
So can we...
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we take this ordinance and take it back to have it rewritten with the focus on commercial property? Or do we need to have a new, do a new ordinance?
So my brief look into other cities, I think the way to address this issue is going to have to be a zoning change or a change to the accessory use permission. And it's going to be something that is in chapter 20, which will have to go to Planning and Zoning Commission first. What I can do is I can bring a draft to the council to look at, but then actually would go to Planning and Zoning before it comes to council. But I do, I did see that on a lot of cities. So in our code, we outline the permitted use in each zone and then it says, "And accessory uses there too," or something along those lines. A lot of other cities then further define what those accessory uses are. And so that is one way, my thought was that we could further define, you know, an accessory use in a B2 does not include tent sales every weekend. Or, you know, includes this or that, you know. Or in B1, it does include yards or sidewalk sales, but it has to meet these restrictions. And so that was my, just a real brief look at some other cities, best way of thinking of handling it. So to answer your question, I think that it will have to be a completely different ordinance. But I've only, I'll say I've looked at about two saves. So I'll keep digging into it.
So is there, is there an amount, number of garage sales that you would be okay with? Like, 10, I'm just throwing out a number, just to throw out a number. You know, or you just want to scrap the whole thing?
I mean, unless people are complaining about it, unless constituents are complaining about it, I don't know that we need an ordinance addressing a problem that, that as far as I know, at least at this point, isn't there. Now, it could be in the future that there's, there's concerns that are expressed, but I just think that what we're doing is we're actually trying to solve, address another problem. Well, let's focus on that. Leave this, leave this, leave this, put this aside until such times as we need to, which is, I don't think now. So I would table, I don't know what the process is, but maybe table consideration of this ordinance and then ask Melanie to go to P&amp;Z, Planning and Zoning Commission, and maybe come back with proposal, how you might address what is actually, actually been our concern.
I do think signs are an issue, though, in that, that addresses resident, residential people from hanging signs on utility poles.
That's in the sign ordinance.
There is a part of this that...
So is there...
Am I stating, am I saying this wrong? Isn't that what this is addressing in red?
Well, no, so what is added in red is just referencing something that's already in our code.
Okay, yeah.
So that is in 2076 already.
Yeah, so we have yard sales in that code already.
Right.
So all the signage, even removing the signage within 24 hours or whatever, that's already in our sign ordinance?
Correct, correct. I was, the changes in red were making the stuff in this chapter the same as what's already in our sign ordinance.
And our nuisance code addresses furniture that is left outside. So like, display paraphernalia would be captured in our nuisance ordinance.
Yep.
I think if we table it, you're just tabling it to the next council meeting. So if we don't want to move this forward at all, John, what's the appropriate way?
We just vote no, don't we?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
And I would say if, in a future proposal, if there is parts of this that do need to come back, that we can't address everything in the commercial zones with a zoning change, I'll probably bring the language from this ordinance in with the zoning as all one ordinance. Even though it's going to be two different, you know, code sections, I'll probably bring it all together so you can move it forward at one time and not have to come back to this issue. So if you vote no on this, that's the way I would handle anything from this ordinance that does need to come back.
Okay, great. Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, just, just to summarize for me, so again, I don't, I'm not saying that there wouldn't not be a need at some point for an ordinance to address this problem, but I'm not seeing, I'm not hearing that's a problem. We should focus on what is the problem, which is something different. So the ordinance right now seems premature.
Okay. Okay, everybody done discussing? Okay, let's go ahead and call a roll. Oh, well, let's call the, do you want to make a motion to not?
I make a motion not to move the...
Not to move it forward.
Not to move ordinance 1274 forward, that's good, yes.
So I think we're doing a double, is there a second to that?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. Any other discussion? So the motion is to not move this forward. With that, call a roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Florenoy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, that was unanimous. Even though we voted yes, we were voting no. Not to move that forward, so, sorry for that confusion. All righty. Under the mayor's report, I've got several things. We want to set the December council meeting for preferably December 15th. That's right in the middle of the month. I would take a motion to set that.
So moved.
Moved by Esti? Seconded by Kness? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Great, thank you. Great news today, Mr. Malloy delivered the news that we have received the Empower Rural Iowa Innovation Housing 2.0 grant. I got it. So that's a $50,000 grant that the city should have about $30,000, plus we've got $50,000 from Mr. Chuck Espy to match that grant. So that's awesome. So we'll, apparently, there's going to be a next step here soon, talking to them, and we'll find out what the next steps are and we'll be moving forward with that.
Can you tell us more about what the funds will be used for?
Tear downs. Tear downs and taking a next step in the housing planning stage. Go ahead, yeah. Yeah, talk about the pattern book.
Evening, council, thank you, mayor. Yes, if you remember, this is a grant that we were, we were invited to participate in by Iowa State University and the School of Architecture. Iowa State, the Iowa State University had led us through what they call 1.0, which is the Housing Readiness Study that council was very involved in. So this is kind of next step. The grant itself is, kind of rewards innovation and creative ideas, so that's what they're looking for from us. We're going to go through a process over probably about six months or so where we will start to explore all the ways that we can creatively prepare for either demolition of old housing, rehabilitation of good housing, people aging in place, a lot of what we're doing already with the Neighborhood Revitalization Program, where we're bringing homes onto vacant lots. All of those will come out during this process and that'll form a pattern book, which is, I think, something they'll use almost as policy recommendations for other communities around the state. So they really want us to take lead in that, in that particular area so as we go through that process. The funds in the application, some of the funds will go to pay some of the folks from Iowa State University School of Architecture that are going to be involved with this. There'll be interns that'll be traveling to Fairfield, they'll cover their travel expenses. And then we basically allocated what the city's portion of the, of the match would be to go towards demolition. And they're going to expect to have demolition homes to be demolished ready when the grant is finished. So that's, that's work the council can do over the next six months also is to see that we, we have those properties. I'll also mention, if you don't mind, mayor, that we didn't hear last Friday from Kating Properties. Now, this was the, the development group from Des Moines that specializes in developing apartment complexes and units. We were selected as a finalist this year for them to visit. They visited five communities around Iowa to determine where their next project investment was going to be. We learned that they have selected Fairfield, so... Yeah, that's, that's going to be a nice one, where, you know, we still have some work to do to button it all up. We're still working on a final piece of land and they'll be, certainly, when my research has shown, when they've gone into other communities, they have received TIF and tax abatement and different things to incentivize them to be there. Our employers, many of whom were part of the tour when they came, have indicated that they want to help in this also to create incentives. So, yeah, it was, it was a great, great vote of confidence. We went from not being on their radar early last year, earlier this year, to basically being a finalist by the end of the year, so we really made a lot of progress. Want to thank the mayor for being a part of the tour, spent the entire day with the team that evaluated us and they had a great day in Fairfield. So a lot of things to work on.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Something's coming up. There is a survey for the community regarding the downtown, has to do with Main Street. So it's a Main Street survey, it's on the Chamber newsletter, and it is also on the Main Street Facebook page. Yeah. So Fairfield Main Street Facebook page, so asking, they want the community to come out and really give their opinion on that survey. So again, it's in the Chamber newsletter, if you get that. If you don't, go to the Fairfield's Main Street, Main Street Facebook page and fill out that survey. The spook ride has been moved to Thursday at Chautauqua Park from 6:00 to 8:00, for all you spooks who like to be scared. I have the, the manufacturers luncheon was last week and I would like to read the proclamation from the manufacturers luncheon. Whereas the manufacturers of industrial goods and services in the city of Fairfield have played a major role in creating a solid foundation of commerce in the city of Fairfield for over 100 years. And whereas the men and women employed within the manufacturing workforce constitute a substantial impact on the economy and the growth of this community and the state of Iowa has more than 4,000 ma... was good to hear their thoughts, and I think she took it all in and was going to, you know, try to help in some of these areas that have been more challenging. Also, in planning for July 4th of next year, I have contacted the National Guard, hoping that they will give a concert next year, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and they sent me a request form. And on this request form, you know, it's just basic information, who's requesting it, and I put the city of Fairfield, and one of the questions is, does the event have official backing of the local government? I have put yes, but I would like for you to put your stamp roll of approval on that before I push this, before I send this back to them. So with that, I would like a motion that it would be okay to request the National Guard Band to come and give our community a concert next July.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy?
Good idea.
Second.
Second by Tohill. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great, thank you very much for that. And, we have a few congratulations here. So I want to congratulate publicly Pete and Kathy Tullner for their Outstanding Tree Farmer of the Year. It's a great recognition for them and our community, I would say. Whitney Monuments had their 150th anniversary. That's pretty cool. They did that two weeks ago, and I'm trying to see if I have checked off all my boxes. I think I have. So thank you. City Attorney Report?
Couple of things that are happening right now. One is, since the last council meeting, both, as relates to Walton Lake, both the administrative review inspections and appeals proceeding and the Jefferson County District Court lawsuit related to that have been dismissed with the last order of the district court on October 20th. So that's not very far in the past. What that means right now is we don't have any pending litigation over Walton Lake at the present time. We don't, I believe, we didn't yet, did we, Melanie, get the construction permit?
They came late ready.
We did get the permit. Okay, so we're in a position where the city is, for all intents and purposes, free to proceed with what it elected to do, and there's a drawdown permit already in place, and there is a permit now authorized by the DNR to allow that to go forward as far as the solution that the council voted on. So I didn't realize we'd gotten that permit, but that puts us in that position. Secondly, I've been working on a development agreement which has to do with paving some parking areas over Kitty Corner from the Blue Rose Old Armory redevelopment and remodel, and I'll try to bring something to your property committee about that after it's reviewed. But the people that own that site want to do something where there would be a substantial contribution towards the cost of repaving with a nicer lot available for events over there in the evenings. That lot would be available throughout the day also for uptown parking, and there would be some conditions the city would entertain, and there would also be some no-cost provisions for the city as far as that proposal. So when I bring it to you, it will probably be a seven or eight-page document, and we'll have some discussion of it first in committee and then before the council. So those two things are just in the process of being shared now, and this has been something that's been talked about previously, but then has been on the back burner for a while, and now it's back out.
Do you anticipate that that would be on the work session next meeting?
I think it could be.
Okay.
We already talked about that, right? But now you're just bringing it back?
Right, I'm just bringing it back. We talked about it several months ago, as far as something we probably could do, and we weren't sure whether we'd be doing it in the form of some kind of specialized lease, whether it would be a development agreement. The city's going to continue to own the property, but there will be some use restrictions for some hours of the day. So that's where we look like we're going with this right now, but it's still the council's decision when you get to airing it. There are a few things that I wanted to mention that we've talked about in prior council meetings that are going on around the state that I think reflect on things that we will probably be considering sometime in the next few months. Des Moines just had the front page of the Sunday Register about adopting a vaping ordinance that restricts tobacco and vape stores to certain areas of town, excludes them from certain areas of town, anywhere that's close to facilities that youth are involved with, that schools are close to, or that recreational activities involve youth, or parks. Those are all things that are part of the Des Moines ordinance. I don't know whether we're going to consider such an ordinance or not, but it was the subject of about a page and a half story in the Register, which means somebody else cares about tobacco and vaping besides small-town Iowa. Secondly, Des Moines hit on something that we've talked about a few times, and they just had a case in their community that involved an ordinance they passed based on something called the Grover's Pass, Oregon case that went to the U.S. Supreme Court, and I told you about it a couple of times months ago, basically a case where the U.S. Supreme Court said in some situations it's okay for a municipality to have vagrancy laws if you have the law for some other reason than to punish people for their status and essentially to maintain order, public health, and public safety. That particular Grover's Pass ordinance had to do with a tent city and moving it out. That's exactly what came up in Des Moines. Down around Gray's Lake in Des Moines, apparently there was a tent city. They used their ordinance to clear it somewhat. It's turned into something that there are protests at the council meetings now up there about the city picking on people because of what they call the crime of existence. And it's relatively complicated as far as vagrancy. We had presenters here before as far as our community's reaction to homelessness and helplessness as far as people that are short on food or no shelter. And we came up with a community resources list that was about a page long and had a pretty meaningful presentation here, but that doesn't solve the problem exactly, and right now it looks like it's getting worse with some of the different kinds of funding programs being shut down. I know I've got friends over at the Lord's Cupboard that aren't sure they're going to have a lot of the food bank funding and so forth come November, and these little, I want to call them miniature mailboxes that have food in them, corner by corner around town, are probably going to become more meaningful and more used as some of those programs become alternative to what we don't have. But other than that, we've had some overtures about people that thought maybe they could live in a tent in people's backyards in this town, and we've had that years ago up around campus. We don't have an ordinance that makes real clear how that works. You basically, we have some things in our subdivision ordinance and so forth that you're not supposed to live in temporary housing for more than a week or two if you're visiting grandma and you park in your driveway with your camper for a week or two. We allow that, but we don't allow a tent city in grandma's backyard. So one of the things that's been talked over up in Des Moines is a group of alternate things so that Des Moines doesn't get itself in trouble with things that have to do with dislocation and relocation. Same kinds of rules that are in the federal code that apply to us every time we get a grant. We certify that we've got about 20 policies, including one about dislocation and relocation. They continue to apply. They have not been repealed. And so if you're looking at a situation where, what do you do with somebody who you tell they're no longer be able to stay in some of the places that have been makeshift shelters around town, they are probably going to be short on some of the food availability. We've got the WELL helping parts of the daytime. We've got Golden Magnolia feeding people at a soup kitchen, and we've got the little kiosk with canned food in them. But other than that, as far as how we're dealing with problems of relocation and dislocation when we take people and say they can't stay where they've been staying, we don't have much of a solution. We actually, in the story, which is a couple pages long in the Sunday Register, they don't have much of a solution. They're talking about things that we have the verbiage for. Here, we've talked in front of council before about zoning such as alternate dwelling units, ADUs, basically mother-in-law's apartments, grandma's cottage on a large enough lot, and tiny homes. And those are all things that are in the story in the Register about things that they're trying to promote. This is coming to Fairfield. I don't know how many people we have in Fairfield. We had a presenter that said it's dozens to 100 maybe homeless. Des Moines has hundreds and hundreds of homeless.
According to the WELL, and I spoke with him at the manufacturer's luncheon, they said somewhere between 100 and 150 people they would consider homeless in Fairfield.
Ten thousand at the WELL, they told me, 40 or 50. So no one knows the number.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think it depends on how you define it.
Yep.
You know, some of those are couch surfers, or at least getting somewhere inside, some definitely don't have a place, they're living in their car.
Or storage units.
Storage units.
Yeah, storage units.
Yeah, so it's a mix.
Yeah, it's an awkward situation because you want to try to be helpful. There's an argument on one side of this that some people just don't want to be helped, but the other circumstance that we do not have a good solution for in our entire quadrant of the state is, quote, "People do not want to be helped." There used to be a way to help them by having them either find a bed at a facility such as Mental Health Institute for a three-day evaluation and an opportunity to figure out what's ticking or not. We don't have anything like that within several hundred miles of here. So our options are, let's see what we can do as far as our local resources. As far as having an ordinance that restricts some of that, we, I don't think, are getting a big demand for doing something about homeless in town, but I still, once in a while, get a call about whether we are going to someday have an ordinance about vagrancy. And I've talked to a couple other of my neighboring city attorneys. Nobody's racing to adopt vagrancy ordinances, but there are some places around the country now following what the U.S. Supreme Court said you could do, but you have to recognize Eighth Amendment against cruel and unusual punishment, and the Sixth Amendment and the Fourth Amendment about search and seizures, and also whether it's a crime or not to exist. And they're saying that without tongue in cheek. They're saying that this seems to punish a person for existing without any resources. So looking at this forward, I think we probably ought to put it on one of our work sessions again, as far as maybe the gentleman that spoke to us before.
Okay.
I have some other people.
Yeah.
Last thing, if I could.
Yeah.
Over the weekend, there was also a, a couple of letters to the editor, which I'm not going to get into, but there was also a summary story about the Iowa Doge Group and a couple, three legislators that are looking at I-PERS. And I would say this is something, if you have a chance to say anything to Jeff Shipley, Adrian Dickie, or Helena Hayes, our area reps, in probably perspective, the Register article talked about a number of things that are misunderstood about I-PERS coverage. And all of our staff and all of our city departments, all in the council, you're all part of I-PERS. I'm not part of I-PERS as far as the city coverage, but I study it, and I have clients that don't understand quite how it works, but it's a defined benefit plan, and it's one of the best operated pension plans for public employees in the United States. But there are people suggesting, some of them legislators, that we maybe should privatize it, and they have a plan somewhat like a 401K that people do on the private side, but they're talking about a 403B, and you can do that with government putting in like a 401K, and it scraps the defined benefit plan. Most people that enjoy I-PERS benefits, they aren't necessarily from quite as high a income contribution group towards their I-PERS benefit as people that contribute to 401Ks. I say that as being a private practitioner and tax preparer at times, and I think there's other people in the room that know what I'm talking about. But scrapping or going to a privatization alternative as part of I-PERS, it seems like a terrible idea to me, but I encourage you to back up. If you pull up something on the Register's website and find that about I-PERS, I think you'll be probably led to have some concern about the misunderstandings about it and why it's a bad idea to shake I-PERS up, period. So I won't say anymore about that, but I'd be glad to share a copy of what I've made on it. It's lengthy enough that I think you'd kick me if I went too far with it here.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to digress just one subject, and that is, just so people know, that I have had concern in a couple wooded areas within our community where they've had big fires, found needles. So there have been a couple pockets in our community where it looks like some people have kind of gathered...
you can do that with government putting in like a 401K, and it scraps the defined benefit plan. Most people that enjoy I-Pers benefits, they aren't necessarily from quite as high a income contribution group towards their I-Pers benefit as people that contribute to 401Ks. I say that as being a private practitioner and tax preparer at times, and I think there's other people in the room that know what I'm talking about. But scrapping or going to a privatization alternative as part of I-Pers seems like a terrible idea to me, but I encourage you to back up. If you pull up something on the Register's website and find that about I-Pers, I think you'll be probably led to have some concern about the misunderstandings about it and why it's a bad idea to shake I-Pers up, period. So I won't say anymore about that, but I'd be glad to share a copy of what I've made on it. It's lengthy enough that I think you'd kick me if I went too far with it here.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to digress just one subject, and that is, I, just so people know, that I have had concern in a couple wooded areas within our community where they've had big fires, found needles. So there have been a couple pockets in our community where it looks like some people have kind of gathered and it doesn't sound like they stay long or somebody chases them out. I don't know. I've spoke to the chief about it. And I actually spoke to one of the owners of the property who ended up putting no trespassing signs up there. So, you know, we, we know it's here. We know that it's here, that there are homeless that are struggling and for various reasons. The other thing is, I did see a post from the Lord's Cupboard that they are short on certain things like canned tuna or canned chicken. So go, again, go to their Facebook page, because I don't remember the several things that they're looking for, but they are looking for donations because during this time when the government is shut down, some of the food.
SNAP.
SNAP and the food, what do I want to say? The truck that comes down here.
Food Network.
Food Network, whatever it's called, may, may not deliver, or it may be less. So we just don't know. So anyway, if, if you have it and you can give a little bit to the Lord's Cupboard to help them out in there, because they are getting new people almost every day. I spoke to one of the board members actually on the weekend, so that's happening. Okay, committee of board reports, we don't have anything listed. Melanie, let's move on to the project updates.
Okay, well, I was going to go back to the Little Free Pantries, because we actually had an application in planning and zoning for one last week. Just, so the council knows while we're on the subject, we do ask that anyone who is building a Little Free Pantry to get a zoning permit for that, but we do not charge for it. I have built two myself, and so by turning it in, it's an opportunity. I, the one that was turned in, they've already gotten into contact with the larger Jefferson County Little Free Pantry organization to get on the map and everything like that. But we have had people who didn't even know that there were standard plans out there. So, you know, encourage people to submit that to us, and we can help get that cited. Chief, I was thinking though, you know, a couple years ago, we did that filling the pantry and some trash talking between the fire and police and sheriff's office in order to try and like raise some awareness for the pantries. Maybe we'll have to do that again and.
Chief Farns, or Chief Farrell's an easier target than Chief Bond, I would assume.
Yeah, but Chief Bond will still join us even from Ossie, so you know, we can, we can probably, we can probably do something like that again. So, anyway, on to project updates. One thing I wanted to mention about Adams overlay, the primary funding source for that is the street's portion of the local option sales tax. So 50% of that local option sales tax goes towards street work every year. And so it is over a couple different fiscal years, but it is the lost funds that are going to be paying for that project. Then, I didn't get it put on here. I didn't notice that Doug didn't have it on his. As Faith mentioned, we are working, we've been working quite a bit on the website implementing some of the recommendations that the RAC committee provided us with, about 12 different things, recommendations, and staff's been working through those, finding some short-term solutions that don't require a complete revamp of the website. One of the things that staff is really proud of is on the updated ordinances, we changed all those PDFs from just a standard PDF to the optic character recognition, so they're now searchable. I know that's been a complaint, and we're going to try and get them now, everything into a more combined format, but we're just working on training all staff on getting the PDFs that go on the website into that OCR format just to make everything more usable. So some of those recommendations are already in progress. I do have one request for the council on the project update, and that is for the VNSF Underpass Bridge mural. I had a request from John Moyn and Schnoz to have the city provide them with water for doing the power washing of the bridge. They're not for sure if they will do that or if they will get it from one of the neighboring properties, but since we were meeting tonight, I was looking to see if council wanted to provide that water for that project at no cost to that project.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion or do we need?
Yeah, go ahead and make a motion, please.
Yes, I will take a motion to supply water at no charge for the power washing of the underpass.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to provide water for the underpass project on the mural. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, I think that was unanimous.
All right. And then there's a second attachment. It does say draft because I didn't have an opportunity to review this with Steve Reddinger in the Water Department regarding the proposal that was brought forth by Chris Sorklatten. And there were a few things regarding the wells that I wanted to make sure that council had an opportunity to review a little bit further before, I guess, moving forward with anything. I attached to my memo is Chris's report. He had kind of talked about coming tonight, but right now I have, it's just been myself and Steve that have reviewed this. Chris, Chris brings up that the, sorry, let me back up. The, the facts of the case are that there is, in state code, and it's actually been that way for a while, but there were some recent changes to the state code that maybe brings this a little bit more to everyone's work run. But what's been in place for a while is that there's a tier one, tier two, and a tier three classification for Jordan wells. And the tier one is that there's no concern. The tier two is that the level of the well has drawn down to 300 feet below kind of a starting elevation, and that starting elevation was based off of a 1978 geological study that was done by, I'm not sure if it's the hydraulic department at University of Iowa or the DNR or in combination. And, and so that's the starting point that they're using. But for reference, that over the eight-year period that Chris reviewed, the change in the Jordan aquifer was 58 feet. Staff is saying that some of that change is due to different measuring techniques, and when that data is plotted, you do see that, I think it's in like July of '22, there is kind of a shift in the average. The big thing, though, that I want to point out is, so an aquifer is created when water gets trapped between layers of rock, specifically below layers of rock, and it's not allowed to move through the earth profile or the soil profile. And so a Jordan, the Jordan aquifer is topped with what's called the Saint Peter Sandstone Formation, which in this part of the state is around 1,000 foot deep. In northeast Iowa, in Wisconsin, it's, you know, a couple hundred, 200 feet deep. And so although I'm not going to say that Chris's watershed improvements are not, they don't have benefits. I haven't looked in detail to what they, what they are and what they would do, but I want to guess point out is, the water in the aquifer are hundreds of thousands of years old. And while I think more research needs to be done on whether we have concerns, whether the city should have concerns about the condition of the aquifer, I'm not, his projects are not, his proposed projects are not going to directly impact them. It doesn't mean that the projects are not worthwhile, but it's there, it's kind of two different issues. I end my, my memo in separating those issues into the watershed improvements that, it's on page two, Jason, my apologies, that the watershed improvements that he's proposing could be discussed more through a task force or committee level. I think the big thing is coordinating with NRCS, Jefferson County Conservation, and all those other parties to make sure that we're not impeding anything that they're doing and not having overlapping goals, overlapping projects, and getting really, you know, a master plan for any of the watershed work that's happening. On the Jordan aquifer, I, I feel personally, before I would make any recommendations, that the elevations and the drawdown, the drawdown elevations need to be looked at further. But I've said in casual conversations to many of you, you know, I would not recommend selling any of our reservoirs. I don't think it's, I didn't think it was going to be in my lifetime, but reading through some of this stuff, that there was a report from 1999 that said the levels could be at a, I don't want to say danger, but more of a concern within 65 years of 1999. So that's a little bit sooner than maybe I had thought. And so it's definitely something that I think we need to consider, continue talking about, you know, if the council moves forward with building codes, putting in requirements for water-reducing fixtures. You know, this community is very water-conscious, and I think having codes to back that up can all help with that, our influence on the Jordan aquifer. Now, there's, you know, 300 communities in Iowa that use the Jordan aquifer. The only way that we're going to save the aquifer is if we're all doing this, but we can certainly do our part. But I think separating Chris's projects from a specific, from the aquifer would be a good way to look at what he's doing. Again, not saying that his stuff isn't good for the watershed, it's just not necessarily going to be a solution for the aquifer itself. So. I don't have an action for council on this. I, you're just, you can review it. Send me any questions. Talk with Chris with any questions. I was finishing this up right before the meeting, and so I haven't even discussed this with Chris. So again, no action for you guys unless you want to take any, but wanted to let you know the types of things that Steve and I have looked at in reviewing Chris's information.
Melanie, is there a part of your report that has a comment on the importance of our surface water storage?
Not, I mean, what I have here is just a page and a half memo. So it is not commenting on the, the surface water. There's a lot of pros and cons to surface water. They're completely different treatment techniques, but what I will say is, you know, I have, I feel like I've always prided myself in this position to not only looking at the city for the time period that I'm serving the city, but beyond. And so I do appreciate Chris bringing this forward, that it, I guess, gives me another thing to worry about. But I mean, I think it's something that does have to be considered, you know, as we make additional laws or procedures. Even when I was first, first in the work first, I didn't understand why cities made, the more water you use, made it cheaper. But that was coming fresh out of college, having gotten a second major in environmental studies. And I'm like, shouldn't we be discouraging people from using water? So, you know, just things like that that we can, you know, as we move forward with different regulations, that we can think about the impacts that it would have on our Jordan aquifer because, you know, another, what, 35 years from now is not that far away, considering the library only, or the library opened 30 years ago. It will be there before we know it. And so.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
By the way, thanks for the work on the ordinance. That is a garage sale.
Oh, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Doug, Doug wrote it, sir.
Yeah.
No problem. Okay, city administrator report.
I have two things that I'd need to get some input from council. As Faith actually spoke earlier, her position with the amount of money raised and the city contributing to $15,000 a year, that she sunsets at, on December 13th.
Now, didn't the, I thought we committed additional $15,000 for the upcoming fiscal year?
Yes.
We're in it.
So, but, but there's an additional, so there's an additional, there's an additional benefits package and what have you that they, in order for her to remain a city employee, that they're raising for. We have the $15,000, but with her pay scale and what, you know, what have you, that it, there's not enough funds to carry her forward. So December 13th is when she sunsets. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So what, what Faith and I had discussed is the fact that, one, you know, that her moving forward to Fran and going and moving her position away from the city and moving into Fran, the 501(c)(3) and she works for them, is still an asset to the city. And then what we had discussed is, would the city be willing to still continue to fund that position of $15,000 per year through them? And then there won't be the city benefits and all of those other things, and they might be able to operate and pay her salary a little less expensively. Those are the things that, that, you know, one, I think the personnel needs to discuss and talk to Faith in depth about. And then lastly, another one is the co-compliance officer and what that looks like. We really need to, before spring hits, property maintenance, you know, the mowing season's over, but we still need to fill the position. Adam's really only working about an hour a day because unless I've got a house that he needs to go look at or a yard that needs to be picked up because of brush and what have you, unless he's addressing a complaint, he's not here. And I really appreciate the fact that he continues to be there for us and not like drag out an eight-hour day and not do anything. He, if he's not doing something, he goes and does something else. But those two positions really need to be addressed before, well, one, almost immediately, the second one before spring.
During the budgeting process.
Oh, absolutely.
So, council, do you want to move that, those two items to personnel for them to look at it? Can I get a motion for that, please?
Yes. Motion to move to those two items to personnel review.
Thank you. Gandy, move, to move these two positions? And who was the second?
Second by Esti.
Any discussion? You want to call the roll? Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Kennes?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That was a proven answer. We need to move co-compliance and the sustainability coordinator position to personnel. Oh, I forgot to mention that if anybody has any more evaluations for our city attorney or our city administrator, please get those into Terry right away by the end of the week. I've scored them, the ones we have, I'm ready to pass them off to her so she can take those to personnel as well. But if you have not turned them in, please do so immediately. And with that, that is all we have on our agenda except for our closed session. So I'll take a motion to go into closed session for IO Code 21.51c.
Give me a break.
Sure. Okay, so what do you want, five minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so when we come back, then we'll go to closed session. Sure. Okay. So what do you want, five minutes?
Yes.
Okay. So when we come back, then we'll go to closed session.